How's everybody doing, Director Childs?
Oh wow.
Good.
Hey Director.
How you doing?
Hey Mayor.
Hello, good evening all. Hello.
Hello, hi.
Good evening.
Alright, we'll get started.
Okay.
The notice requirement provided for the open public meetings law has been satisfied. Notice was properly given, said notice having been transmitted to the Courier News on Friday, April 10th, 2020, as well as posting on the city's website. Clerk may have a roll call.
You're muted but present.
Good. Councilman Good.
Present.
President. Councilman McCray.
Present.
Councilwoman Mills Ransom.
Present.
Vice President Armadi.
Here.
Council President Hockaday.
Here.
Formular's pleasant in form. Thank you Clerk. Do we have any communications from the mayor? Yes, we have correspondence dated August 7th, 2020 from his honor, the mayor Adrian O'Matt, addressed to members of the governing body notifying the appointment of Abby Levinson as the acting business administrator for the city of Plainfield effective August 10th, 2020. Alright. That's fine. Alright. Well. Any comments regarding that? Mayor, did you want to say a word or two, or is that fine? Your choice.
Well, I just want to congratulate Abby on being chosen as the acting business administrator. I look forward to all cabinet members as well as council members and everyone working with Abby to make sure that she's successful and that we continue to move the city forward. So I say congratulations to Abby and I thank her for being or for agreeing to be in this role. Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, congratulations as well. Okay.
Real quick, Council President. Congratulations, Ms. Levinson, on the acting role. Just a quick question and either yourself or the mayor can answer, but if I'm not mistaken, congratulations on your impending addition to your family, but.
Thank you.
My question is, what, are you not going to take maternity leave, or how will that be handled?
Mayor, I'll answer. Can you hear me? Okay. I will be taking a shorter than planned maternity leave, but I will be taking a maternity leave and during that time, the city clerk who's very familiar with the acting business administrator role will be stepping in in my place.
Okay. So, next we will move to, I want to hear from the IT, the Director of Communications, Jas Clayton Hunt. You have a presentation on our new reported. You have the floor, Director.
Thank you Council President. So, last week I sent some communication to council as well as, you know, other members of the administration to talk about the reported app that actually went live today. So, I just wanted to give a short walkthrough demonstration of how the reported app works and how it will be beneficial for residents. I'm going to share my screen right now. I'm just going to walk, I'm just going to share it through. Page. You can dow, most, we're encouraging most, everyone to download it, the app as far as possible. However, those who don't wish to download it, they can simply go to our website and there is a button there that says something to report. If you click on it, it will take you to the reported page that was created for this purpose. And there is an option here where you can say click to access from desktop or mobile device. Either way, it will take you to the reported page. And here you'll see, so what has happened is that reported has put a geo fence around the city of Plainfield. So, once you are within the city limits, the city of Plainfield will pop up as an option for where you want to file your report. So you click on that and then these are the departments that we have participating at the moment. And so, for example, if you want to send a report to the DPW department, you would just click on Public Works. We have a box that pops up that, you know, says, obviously if it's an emergency, don't use this app, call 911. And then the person filing the report would simply go through the menu provided to see if their concern is listed there. So, for example, we'll say leave for brush removal. It asks if you're reporting as a resident or property owner, or a visitor, or city employee, or other. If it's a other, I'd rather not say, or let's say resident or property owner. And it prompts you to put in the date and time and you also have, and you could put in the address. You also have, you could give additional comments here and you have the option to add a photo or video and add it to the report. And you have the option to either include your contact information if you want to, or say no and report anonymously. If you decide to include your contact info, of course, another box pops up and you have to populate that. And then you would quit, you would simply hit submit. And when you do that, it gives you a confirmation and a report number so that if you want to check back to see if there was a response given or whatever, you can get back in. And if you'll notice at the top, I should have mentioned this earlier, you have the option to change to, there are over, there are 100 languages in here. So, if, for example, someone speaks Afrikaans and they don't speak English, it would allow them to type in that language and everything, all the commands would be in that language. However, when the report comes to us, it would be translated to English. So, for those who English is not their first language, it's not prohibitive for them to, you know, share their concern. As soon as, so we have an auto response in there. Soon as someone files a report, they get an immediate thing saying, you know, we got your, we got your report and someone will follow up with you momentarily. Now, right now, the reports are routed to the different departments and they're also copied to the communications IT department. And we are able to log into the dashboard to see, so whenever it goes to the departments and they have action on it, they're supposed to log into the dashboard and note what action was taken and also if it's concluded. And that way we can go in and say, and know that it was closed and there was action taken on it in case we get another report or a similar report. And this way we're also able to pull monthly reports to see how many were active on, how many are still outstanding, and where the status is with them. And for the immediate future, as I said, a copy will go to communications IT and we will do a follow-up within 24 to 48 hours just to ensure that action is being taken on all the reports. So, that's the really quick overview of how the program works. Over the next few weeks or so, we'll be doing a hard push. You will see. Everything materials that looks similar to what you see here, encouraging people to download the app and to communicate with the city. And of course, the whole idea behind it is just making the city more accessible and trying to get information across as quickly as possible to the departments and to try and get, you know, a quicker response out there to recognize concerns. And it also, you know, empowers our residents and empowers our visitors because it's a direct line into the city, or it's an easy way to report it, especially for people who maybe don't want to, for whatever reason, have their name and numbers involved in filing a report. So. I'd be, if there are any questions, I'd be happy to address them.
Okay. I'll look for questions from council if anybody wants to say anything about this.
Council President, I have a question.
You go right ahead, Councilman Good.
Thank you so much, Director Hunt, for that presentation. Thank you for also the communication via email, letting us know that today was the launch date. Just have one question, is it safe for me to assume that this will be available in the newsletter every time it comes out? So that way, you know, or is it just for the launch date?
No, it will, we had a link for the, at least for the next few weeks, we're putting it in every edition of the newsletter. It was in the one today and we'll be repeating that in all the other editions until, you know, as long as it, we feel that it's been, you know, we've saturated and everyone knows about it.
Okay, so for those that don't get the newsletter, will there be?
Media and we'll be doing a series of roll calls, encouraging people to download the app.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Any other council members wish to chime in?
I have a question.
Sure.
So first I want to say, Director Clayton Hunt, that this is a great idea. I like the fact that residents can report things in real time. So, just two things. So, one, a resident texts me that during your presentation, they didn't see your large screen like we did. So, if it's possible, can you, I guess, like have like a video or something to show residents how it works? Also, this question is more for corporation council. So, with us getting these reports in real time and them having to go through a process, do we have like any liability or something when it comes to fixing the problems? So, like a pothole, like if somebody hits a pothole, if somebody reports the pothole and then they hit it, does that give us any liability, like, oh, we didn't fix it in enough time, or anything like that?
Well, you raise a good question, Councilwoman Davis. A question of notice is always an issue when it comes to involving property. When did we know about it? So, from that perspective, yes, it could create an additional requirement of notice. How I believe that having the ability to fix problems more quickly is of greater value to us than the liability that it could potentially create.
Okay. Also, Director Clayton Hunt, just a follow-up. So, if I understood correctly, the reports would come to your office, then your office would then disseminate them to the proper departments?
No, they go to the department and to my office simultaneously.
Okay. Thank you.
You're very welcome.
Okay. Looking for any other council members that wish to ask questions or comment?
Just a quick question about the routing, because, you know, citizens are not always going to be particularly accurate in selecting the right department that they think is responsible. So, how does that work on reported with respect to someone choosing? You know, I'll just make it up, police department, animal control, when it should go to code enforcement? Do the department, does animal control, and I assume that's going to Dr. Nadir's office or Director Brown's office have the control to then reroute that to code enforcement? Or how does that work?
Well, it, the copy that comes to communications, it would tell us which department it went to. And like I said, we're checking, our department is checking all those reports on a daily basis. So, we would leave a post for rerouting it to the appropriate department.
So, the system allows you to change the department?
I would, I, to be honest, I am not sure if this system would allow me to change. I don't think it allows me to change the report as it comes in. However, I would bring it to the, we would bring it to the attention of the appropriate department. In the system, it probably would still be marked as going to animal control.
I would encourage you to get with reported, to see if you can get some sort of admin capability to, you know, change that to the appropriate department, just to save, you know, paperless time and then misreporting, because then you're going to have stuff going to animal control that isn't animal controlled. And so, your data out of that is going to be all messed up.
Thank you for that suggestion. I will follow up on that.
Alright. Well, you know, again, Director and Mayor and his administration, this is a, a, an application, a feature that will enable us to be more agile in terms of responding to concerns of our residents and also really enabling the residents to be the true eyes and ears of all of us. Because we know we can't be everywhere all at the same time. So, this enables us to almost be everywhere at the same time through our residents. So, you know, we wanted to have this presentation so that residents know about it. And, you know, we'll continue to give information about this. I'm sure the council people will also tout this as a feature in order to provide enhanced constituent services. And we just want to keep drilling down on it because we think that it can be something that makes, gives, give better customer service to our residents, you know, from all of our perspective. So, kudos on this. We're going to move towards consideration of public hearing, second reading, and final passage. Clerk, please.
Just point of order, Council President, I don't think you've had public comment yet, unless I'm mistaken.
No, yeah, we'll have public comment with each individual.
Don't we have public comment on non-agenda items before here?
I believe that follows the.
We do it, okay. I see. Okay. Thank you.
No problem.
Okay, consideration of public hearing, second reading, and final passage. Clerk, please read MC 202014 by title and further certify that all, that the ordinance has complied with all statutory publication requirements. Okay, Clerk, you may need to move a little closer to your microphone because if other people he'll hear you at a low volume. I could hear you, but it was, it was pretty faint. Is this better? That was a little better. Yeah.
I'm not so sure. It's just background noise that's also cutting him off. There's a lot of, like echoes and things too, I'm getting.
Alright, I'll read it again. MC 202014 is an ordinance adopting the redevelopment plan for the scattered city-owned parking lots and adjacent lots and redevelopment areas hereby certify that the notice of the public hearing on this ordinance was published in the Courier News on July 23rd, 2020. Thank you. Much better. The floor is now open to any member of the public who would like to speak on this ordinance. So Clerk, I'm going to ask for you to monitor the hand raising feature to see if any members of the public raise their hands. As customary, we ask that you raise your hand and if you'd like to be heard on this ordinance.
If you dialed in with a phone, it would be star nine to use the raise hand option.
Thank you. We have no members of the public that have identified they want to speak, Council President. Okay. May I have a motion to close public hearing on this ordinance?
Person.
Second.
Okay. May I have a motion to adopt this ordinance on second reading and final passage? And if adopted, the ordinance shall be published as required by law.
Second.
Clerk, roll call please. Councilmembers Davis.
No.
Councilman Good.
Yes.
Councilman McKenna.
No.
Councilman McCray.
Yes.
Councilwoman Mills Ransom. Councilwoman Mills Ransom, you're muted? I'll come back to her.
My phone doesn't say I'm muted.
It hears you now.
So, my response was yes.
Okay. Vice President Armadi.
Yes.
Council President Hockaday.
Yes.
Five in favor to oppose this ordinance has been adopted. Okay, thank you. Clerk, please read MC 2020-15 by title and further certify that the ordinance has complied with all statutory publication requirements. MC 202015 is an ordinance adopting a redevelopment plan for the South Avenue Corridor Redevelopment Area. It is hereby certified that the notice of the public hearing on this ordinance was published in the Courier News on July 23rd, 2020. The floor is now open to any member of the public who would like to speak on this ordinance. Okay, seeing none, no individuals raised their hand. May I have a motion to adopt this ordinance on second reading and final passage? And if adopted, shall be as required by law. Okay? You got a mo, you got a motion?
Close public hearing.
Okay. I missed the second on that.
Second.
Okay. Clerk, may I have a roll call? Councilmembers Davis.
Yes.
Councilman Good.
Yes.
Councilman McKenna.
No.
Councilman McCray.
Yes.
Councilwoman Mills Ransom.
Yes.
Vice President Armadi.
Yes.
Council President Hockaday.
Yes.
Favoring one opposed, ordinance has been adopted on second reading and final passage. Thank you. Clerk, please read MC 2020-16 by title and further certify that the ordinance has complied with all statutory publication requirements. MC 202016 is an ordinance adopting the TODD West Redevelopment Plan Amendment dated June 4th, 2020. It is hereby certified that the notice of the public hearing on this ordinance was published in the Courier News on July 23rd, 2020. Floor is now open to any member of the public who'd like to speak on this ordinance. Okay, seeing none. May I have a motion to close public hearing on this ordinance? Okay. May I have a, I didn't hear the second. It was kind of the same.
Council President, am I the only one that's, audio's going in and out because I'm, you're chopping up on my end? Maybe it's.
It might be helpful if everybody mutes if they're not talking. I think that's the problem.
Okay, I, can we have the motion in second again, just for clarity, for the record?
So be it.
Second.
Second.
Thank you. May I have a motion to adopt this ordinance on second reading and final passage? And if adopted, the ordinance shall be published as required by law.
So moved. Second.
Thank you. Clerk, may I have a roll call? Councilmembers Davis.
Yes.
Good.
Yes.
McKenna.
No.
McCray.
Yes.
Mills Ransom.
Yes.
Vice President Armadi.
Yes.
Council President Hockaday.
Yes.
Six in favor, one opposed, this ordinance has been adopted on second reading and final passage. Okay, Clerk, please read MC 2020-17 by title and further certify that the ordinance has complied with all statutory publication requirements. MC 202017 is an ordinance to amend Chapter 9 licenses, permits, and regulated activities. Article 15 vehicles for transportation of passengers, taxi cabs. Section 91520 forms information to be given on chauffeur's licenses, applications in section 91532, owner's responsibility for fitness of drivers. It's hereby certified that the notice of the public hearing on this ordinance was published in the Courier News on July 23rd, 2020. Floor is now open. Any member of the public who would like to speak on this ordinance? The attendees seeing none. May I have a motion to close public hearing on this ordinance?
Moved.
Second.
May I have a motion to adopt this ordinance on second reading and final passage? And if adopted, the ordinance shall be published as required by law.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, may I have a roll call? Councilmembers Davis.
Yes.
Good.
Yes.
McKenna.
Yes.
McCray.
Yes.
Mills Ransom.
Yes.
Vice President Armadi.
Yes.
Council President Hockaday.
Yes.
That is unanimous. This ordinance has been adopted on second reading and final passage. We now move to public comments, limited to resolutions, motions, and ordinances to be introduced on first reading. A total of 30 minutes has been allocated for public comments limited to resolutions and ordinances considered this evening. If you wish to be heard, please hit the hand icon to be recognized and you will be unmuted. Once that occurs, please give your name and address for the record. Each speaker will be given three minutes. Floor is now open. Comments? Resolutions, motions, and ordinances to be introduced this evening. Okay, I see one participant, one member of the community here.
Yeah. Council President, this is Mary Burwinkle from 1785 Sleepy Halloween. And I would like to commend Councilperson Davis for putting a resolution up for the very sad death of our friend, Frank Diversa. Frank, Frank was a very good friend of mine of the whole community, was a public guy. He could volunteer for something he did, he could support something he did. It's very sad that Frank has died and I offer my condolences to his wife Liz, who's also a huge community volunteer and to all of his loved ones. And there are tons of loved ones. So, thank you so much.
Absolutely. Absolutely. Very appropriate that he'd be honored in this, in this way and more. See, are there any other members of the public who wish to speak on motions, resolutions, and ordinances to be considered on first reading? Alright. Seeing none, I'd like to make a motion to close public comments on resolutions, motions, and ordinances to be considered, introduced on first reading?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposition, abstentions? Public hearing is now closed. Okay, Clerk, will you please offer the resolutions? Resolution 23120, convey condolences to the family and friends of Mr. Frank Diversa. Okay. Any questions or additional comments regarding this from council members?
I just want to echo Ms. Burwinkle's sentiments. Mrs. Diversa was a great First Ward resident who did a lot for the First Ward, for the Plainfield Democratic City Committee. He was never afraid to speak truth to power or to call us to the carpet when he thought we were out of order. And I hope that other residents follow in his spirit of saying what he felt, especially when he felt it was right and it was necessary.
Thank you for that, Councilwoman Davis. Okay, do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Got all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposition, abstentions? This resolution is unanimously approved. Resolution 23220, authorizing the issuance of a bingo raffle license to the Plainfield Vikings. Any questions from council members? Okay, do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And the opposition, abstentions? This resolution is approved.
Resolution 23320, designating the Plainfield City Hall Plaza as the Black Lives Matter Plaza.
Any questions from council?
Council President, I have more of a comment.
Sure, go right ahead.
So, while I fully support this resolution, and I appreciate the symbolic gestures that the city has taken to show its agreement and affirmation that black lives in fact matter. I think we're at a critical juncture to show that black lives matter through action and through deed. It is important that cities like ours set the tone and be the model of what it looks like when black lives in fact matter. This is not just about the here and now, but it's about the future. We all have a role to play in creating a legacy that lives long past our times in public service. Everyone has a part to play in this. As council members, we should be leading the charge in creating legislation and championing resolutions that work to dismantle systemic racism. Every department in our city has a role to play as well. For example, our Public Works Department can ensure that your zip code doesn't determine the quality of your neighborhood's infrastructure. Our police can assure enforcement is fair and equitable. Communications can ensure that images and correspondence from the city represents diversity we all love in Plainfield and looks like all of our neighborhoods. Even our finance department can ensure that the companies we do business with represent the values that we hold so important in this community. They can work to ensure that we're not putting more money in pockets of companies that support other people or causes that benefit from the same systemic issues that we're seeking to change. I'm not saying that we're not doing this already, but some of these, but this time in history is an opportunity for Plainfield to be the standard bearer for not only the rest of the county or the state, but the rest of the country. Fannie Lou Hamer once said, "No one is free until all of us are free." So, in renaming City Hall Plaza and painting Black Lives Matter in our streets, let's also work together to develop policies and ordinances that improve the lives of our most marginalized and disenfranchised residents because Plainfield isn't one Plainfield until all of the residents can believe collectively in its bright future. Thank you.
Absolutely, Councilwoman Davis. I, I, I agree with those comments 100%. And, and, and that's why I was really glad to hear when you were one of the members of, of the George Floyd Commission doing, you know, just one part of that, you know, thousand-piece puzzle that we need to, to bring true equity for, for all of our residents. You know, tho- those comments there certainly are, are very, very well received and very important. So, thank you for making them, thank you for being you, and just continue on with the struggle, Councilwoman. Any other questions or comments from, from council members? Okay, do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Abstentions? Okay, this resolution is approved.
Resolution 23420, authorizing the award of a contract to All Paid Inc.
Are there any questions from council members?
Yes.
Go right ahead.
So first, Mr. West, I'm happy to see that we have more flexibility in how residents can pay for things, so they can truly trip, skip the trip to City Hall. But when we go through the budget, we always have those merchant fees. And I remember you said one time that we could not pass along their merchant fees to residents. But this is now saying that we are passing along those merchant fees. So how are we able to do that now?
No, at municipal court, we can't pass on the merchant fees.
Okay. So everywhere else we can.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you so much.
All right.
Any other questions from council members? Okay, do we have a motion?
Moved.
Second.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposition, abstentions? This resolution is approved.
Resolution 23520, authorizing approval to amend the CY 2020 municipal budget to insert items of special revenue.
Any questions from council?
Yes.
Go right ahead, Councilwoman Davis.
Um, so I saw one of the items inserted was from the DOT for train station improvements. Can we kind of speak to what those improvements are, or what we foresee them being?
On that one, I'm not in the best position to talk about the improvements, so I would, I would reach out to Orrin to talk about all that we plan on doing around the train station with this $150,000.
Director Dabney's on, on the line. We can, Director Dabney, you have the floor, if you have anything to add regarding this?
Okay, as far as improvements, are we going to do some concrete work and benches and some landscaping work, that's what that fund, those funds are for? Around here?
Thank, thank you, Director.
Council President?
Yes, go right ahead, Councilman Good.
Director Dabney, is that enough?
Well, there'll be more coming as, as we move forward, that's all.
All right, thank you.
Okay, do we have a motion?
Moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
In the opposition? Abstentions, this resolution is approved.
Resolution 23620, authorizing change order number two for the release of the performance bond for Hannah Atkins Basketball Improvement Project.
Are there any questions from council members? Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition, abstentions, this resolution is approved.
Resolution 23720, authorizing the award of a contract to Land Tech Group Inc.
Are there any questions from council members? Seeing none, do we have a motion?
Yes.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Abstentions, this resolution is approved.
Resolution 23820, authorizing the award of a contract to Field Turf.
Are there any questions from council members regarding this resolution? Okay, all right, seeing none, do we have a motion?
So moved.
Okay.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Abstentions, this resolution is approved.
Resolution 23920, authorizing approval for a street opening at 511 New Street to New Jersey American Water.
Are there any questions from council members? Do we have a motion?
Person.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposition, abstentions, this resolution is approved.
Resolution 24020, authorizing approval for the adoption of the City of Plainfield manual policies and procedures for locally administered federal projects.
Do we have questions from council members? All right, seeing none, do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition, abstentions, this resolution is approved.
Resolution 24120, authorizing the appointment of a waiver of residency to Joseph Haveneck Jr.
Looking for questions from council members?
I have a question.
Go right ahead, Councilwoman.
Um, where was this job posted? How long was it posted for, and how many Plainfield residents applied for this position?
Good question, Councilwoman. It was posted for two and a half months, one month on the League of Municipalities website, and two and a half months on our website here in Plainfield. There was no residence that applied from Plainfield. We posted for two and a half months for that reason, to try to get more residents to apply. Unfortunately, we have one person that submitted an application for this. This requires quite a few licenses, which we hope some Plainfield residents do obtain those licenses over time. But no one had licenses, no one applied.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Do we have a motion?
Don't move.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposition, abstentions, this resolution is approved.
Resolution 24220, authorizing a lean placement for property cleanup.
Any questions from council? Do we have a motion?
So moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition, abstentions, this resolution is approved.
Resolution 24320, designating 1369 South Avenue Urban Renewal LLC as redeveloper for the redevelopment of certain properties in the City of Plainfield.
Are there any questions from council members? Seeing none, do we have a motion?
So moved.
Okay.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition?
No.
Abstentions? Oh, was that an opposition, Sean?
Yes.
Okay, clerk, can we have a roll call?
Roll call, Resolution 24320, Councilmembers Davis?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
McKenna?
No.
McCray?
Yes.
Mills Ransom?
Yes.
Vice President Armadi?
Yes.
Council President Hockaday?
Yes.
Six in favor, one opposed, resolution passes. Resolution 24420, designating certain properties commonly known as 925 through 927 South Second Street, 921 through 923 South Second Street, and 929 through 935 South Second Street as non-condemnation redevelopment areas.
Looking for questions from council members.
Yes, I have a question.
Please go right ahead, Councilwoman.
Uh, so Director Jackson, I see in this redevelopment plan, it includes South Second Street Youth Center, the old one, not the new one. So my concern is really about the historical significance that that building has to this city. A lot of people remember it back in the day when it was a youth center, like a true youth center. A lot of people remember it when it was the daycare before they moved onto Plainfield Avenue. By including this in the area in need of redevelopment, can the building potentially be knocked down and changed into something else? Or can the building still stay and just the uses of it change?
Okay, Councilwoman Davis, yes, the building can potentially be demolished as well as it could be reused. Right now, we're just saying that it's an area in need of redevelopment. This is not the redevelopment plan, so it doesn't talk about permitted uses and all of those kinds of things, but it's just designating it as an area in need of redevelopment. I have researched kind of all of the uses of this building since the early 1900s, and I forget the exact date when it was erected, but I have taken a look at that particular timeline. It also has significance in relationship to the industrial properties formerly, all which were part of the Mack truck operation, and at one time it was the administrative headquarters. So, we have looked at its previous uses, and we are, if we're designated as an area in need of redevelopment, then we will go and create a redevelopment plan for this area.
Council President?
Yes, Councilman Good?
Director Jackson, if that edifice was left, is it safe to say that there's a lot of work that would need to be done inside? Because from what I understand, hearing in the past, that a lot of things in there need to be replaced or repaired.
Yes, it would require, if, if it was maintained, it would be the exterior only. It would essentially be a gut rehab.
Gotcha, thank you.
Any other questions from council members?
Yes, so as a follow-up, Director Jackson, in designing the area redevelopment and then potentially creating a redevelopment plan, in the redevelopment plan, are we going to talk about the, the his, or in redeveloping that area and speaking to developers, are we going to talk about the historical significance of that building? And also, is that a building that the City of Plainfield owns?
It's currently a building that the City of Plainfield does own. We've owned it for a while, even when it was the former South Second Street Youth Center, it was leased to them. And as we talk about the significance of the building, we will talk about the significance of the area. Remember, this property is directly across from Injecton, which is a 10-acre industrial site, and that I have, along with others on my team in NJIT, been looking at the whole industrial quarter and also looking at the history. And that building, we will definitely explain the significance of it in relationship to all of its prior uses and the current environment.
Just one more question, are there any deed restrictions in place for that building?
Not that I'm aware of. None have come to light in terms of our research, so there's no deed restriction.
Thank you.
Okay.
All right, do we have a motion?
Moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposition, abstentions? Oh, okay, clerk, let's have a roll call.
Councilmembers Davis?
No.
Good?
Yes.
McKenna?
Yes.
McCray?
Yes.
Mills Ransom?
Yes.
Vice President Armadi?
Yes.
Council President Hockaday?
Yes.
Six in favor, one opposed, resolution passes. Resolution 24520, designating 611 Front Street Plainfield Urban Renewal LLC as redeveloper for the redevelopment of certain properties in the City of Plainfield.
Do you have any questions from council?
Yes.
Go ahead, right, go right ahead, Councilman Good.
Uh, maybe I'm wrong, I don't know. Mr. Mancello? Maybe is this a reason why it's with the Department of Health and Social Services and not the Department of Economic Development?
Uh, yes, on this specific matter, Director Jackson had reached out to me and based on a previous work relationship, Director Jackson asked me for a legal opinion on whether she was conflicted. Ultimately, we agreed in abundance of caution that she would not coordinate this matter and that this matter would be handled by Director Brown. So based on her previous relationship with this particular developer, we opted
Okay, last question. Director Brown, pros and cons, well, how do we benefit from this?
We are looking at, I mean, I can tell you what the development looks like and, and take you through that, but it is certainly looking at a, a Marino track, which is the old Marino's track that we have been trying to develop since 2000. It is bringing in apartments. It's about a 400,000 square foot development, of which 30,000 square feet would, would be retail, of which, we're talking about a 25,000 square foot supermarket in that neighborhood. And so, the benefit is that we will be bringing in new amenities to that neighborhood. It, it has certainly been one that we have been trying to, the city has been trying to develop for over 20 years, and this is a good opportunity to work with the developer who has an experience of, of doing work not only in our city, but also in urban communities and sensitive to the needs of those communities as well.
Thank you so much.
Any other questions from council members?
Yes.
Councilwoman Davis?
Um, just a follow-up to Councilman Good's first question about Director Brown taking the lead on this. Is Director Jackson helping him to shepherd this through the process? While Director Brown answered that question very well, development isn't really his background, as far as I know. So are we giving him the tools to be successful in spearheading this process?
Councilman Davis, I, I can speak to that, and I can say absolutely yes. Director Brown is qualified to handle this. We have various professionals who support and advise Director Brown on this project, planners, redevelopment council. So, but to answer your question, Director Jackson is not working on this project specifically because obviously we, we take questions of conflict very seriously, and she reached out to me, and in abundance of caution, we decided that it was not appropriate for her to work on this project and assign it to Director Brown. But I can assure you that he is certainly qualified and has the support of the rest of the team as we move forward.
Thank you. Director Brown, clearly you're a man of many talents, so good luck to you, and I hope that your work here really benefits the residents of this city.
I echo that.
Any other questions from council members? I, I just have one quick comment, and, and I understand the, the conflict concept, but I, I think I would just ask that in the
but I, I think I would just ask that in the future, when these occur, that, that the administration or corporation council, uh, announces the conflict without having a question asked for it to be brought forth. Um, I think in full transparency, that should be, that should be brought to the table, um, without being asked.
Any other questions from council? Okay, do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Abstentions? This resolution is approved.
Resolution two forty-six twenty, authorizing the mayor to execute a memorandum of agreement with the New Jersey Medical School Global Tuberculosis Institute.
Questions from council members? Seeing none?
Yes.
Oh, no. Councilwoman Davis?
Sorry, um, so Director Brown, um, and what we, so this is for tuberculosis testing, if I'm correct, right?
It's testing in nurse, uh, management care.
Okay, so in what ways are we going to reach out to like, kind of reassure the public that getting tested is going to be safe, especially in this like COVID environment where people are afraid to even go to the doctors?
So most of our testing for TB is through a physician. So what happens is they go to the physician, they make it tested TB, and then we're notified. Then it becomes our, uh, our mandate to follow up and make sure that they get the services that they need.
Got you, thank you.
Any other questions from council members? Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Abstentions? This resolution is approved.
Resolution two forty-seven twenty, authorizing approval to enter into an agreement with the New Jersey Association of County and City Health Officials for the reimbursement of COVID-nineteen related response activities.
Okay, looking for questions from council members. Seeing none. Uh, do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Abstentions? This resolution is approved.
Resolution two forty-eight twenty, authorizing the submission of an application to the New Jersey Department of Health Family Services for the WIC Nutrition Program.
Looking for questions from council members. Okay, seeing none. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Abstentions? This resolution is approved. Okay, we now come to ordinances on first reading. Uh, clerk, will you please read MC twenty twenty dash eighteen by title?
MC twenty twenty eighteen is an ordinance authorizing the execution of a financial agreement with eight oh three South Avenue Urban Renewal LLC, and granting a tax exemption with respect to certain properties identified on the city's tax map as block six forty-five, lot twelve, and identified in the city's tax records as seven fifty-seven through eight nineteen South Avenue.
Are there any questions from council members?
Yes.
Councilwoman Davis, please.
Uh, Director Jackson, in the items included to look at, uh, we have, uh, existing taxes versus pilot taxes, um, and the existence taxes are very low compared to the pilot, but right now, those existing taxes are only on the land, right? Once we build something on that land, wouldn't the taxes be more?
In this case, there is an existing building, so it is building and land, uh, in terms of eight oh three is the, it's adjacent to the Public Works Yard, eight oh three South Avenue, so you'll see a building on that property right now.
So, as we de- develop that property and build something bigger, are we, can we get more taxes out of like a bigger building, or is the tax is going to be the same, no matter the size of the building?
No, so the, uh, the building is going to be demolished, the current.
Right.
And so there will be a bigger building. It's going to be a five-story building, uh, with ground floor, commercial space, and, uh, a hundred and four residential units for that particular property. And when you're looking at the taxes, the current taxes, uh, we're looking at, uh, that being around, uh, four hundred, I mean, forty thousand, a little over forty thousand, and the city's share of that is twenty-three thousand. We also attached, uh, to the, uh, pilot, the spreadsheet that looks at the thirty-year, and so over the thirty-year period, uh, based on existing taxes, the city would get, uh, nine hundred and seventy-one thousand dollars in taxes, almost a million dollars over thirty years. But based on this pilot, the city would get, over that same period, eleven million dollars and some change. And so, uh, that's because we're significantly improving the property. Uh, without a tax abatement, uh, the property wouldn't improve to this level.
Okay, so two questions then?
Yes.
So when you improve it, the taxes go up, but if we don't give a pilot to this, uh, it won't improve because nobody would build on it?
Uh, yes, so the developer, uh, doesn't have enough incentive at that point, uh, to develop on it. You'll also, uh, note the rate of return. So we look at the rate of return on an investment, and so for the investment that they're making in the property, uh, their rate of return or, or their yield, uh, uh, is roughly seven percent, and that's lower than what E, EDA predicts, uh, for a good rate of return, and so that justifies the pilot.
Are these one and two-bedroom units that, uh, this property is going to have?
Yes.
Okay, so I think one of my other concerns is, um, if we grant this pilot, um, the city, while the city does get a larger share, um, our school district does not get a share, but yet we're potentially bringing in more people to the school district, and they have a bigger burden to share. And while people will argue that the city should worry about the city, if we talk about this ideal of one Plainfield, we have to also keep in mind that that includes the success of our school district as well.
Yeah, and so this is an ongoing pilot discussion. Uh, the re, uh, the number of children, uh, that are produced is based on bedrooms, and so therefore, at, we have historical data, records updates the data periodically, that looks at one and two, studio one and two bedrooms do not produce the number of children that three bedrooms produce. And so you will notice that in most of our developments around the train station, we are not doing, uh, three bedrooms, and if we do, it's the minimum number of three bedrooms. Uh, so again, the number of schoolchildren, uh, that is produced, uh, is based on the number of bedrooms.
Thank you.
And may add to this, Mr. Council President.
That's right.
The cost of light is way greater than the number of dollars that will not go to our school district. And additionally, when you compare that with the overall significantly more dollars that will be coming into the city as a result of development, the choice is do you want to retain light, or do you want to develop and enhance the bottom line of the city and make the city more inviting than it otherwise would be? So those are factors that we also look at when coming to decision as to whether or not to let what is remain in place or to remove light in favor of development.
Uh, I just have a follow-up question. Um, so I want to thank the mayor for that. I think he makes some very valid points, um, about the cost of light, but in these pilot agreements or coming up with these pilots, are we actively having a conversation with other stakeholders in the city to ensure that we all win or we all get a piece of this, uh, incentive?
Uh, I would say yes to that question. Uh, we always, in these pilot agreements, negotiate community benefits, uh, associated with this, and so some of those community benefits are for education, some would actually be for equipment for the schoolchildren, uh, some will be, uh, rehabbing and improving our parks, which our children utilize. With each, uh, financial agreement, we are negotiating a community benefits agreement. Uh, in this case, the community benefits agreement is a hundred thousand, which will go to our redevelopment trust, uh, to do the kinds of things that we need to do to improve the quality of life for all Plainfielders.
Thank you.
I'll now entertain a motion, uh, to adopt this ordinance on first reading.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, clerk, may I have a roll call?
Councilmembers Davis?
Yes.
Councilman Good?
Yes.
Councilman McKenna?
Yes.
Councilman McCray?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mills Ransom?
Yes.
Vice President Armadi?
Yes.
Council President Hockaday?
Yes.
That is unanimous. This ordinance has been adopted on first reading.
Thank you. Uh, we now move to public comment. A total of sixty minutes has been allocated for all public comments to be presented this evening. Each speaker will be allotted five minutes. If you wish to be heard, please hit the hand icon to be recognized, and you will be unmuted. Once unmuted, give your name and address for the record. Uh, each, the floor is now open.
Uh, caller, you need to unmute yourself?
Hello all, this is Timothy Priano of fourteen oh five Martine Avenue. Uh, I hope all are surviving this COVID we're living in. We are starting our fifteenth week doing the best, trying to feed those in need. Unfortunately, we have to stop using Ducrey School of the Arts Building so that the school can prepare for the fall programs. Food insecurity in Plainfield describes a household inability to provide enough food for every person to live an active, healthy lifestyle. In the United States currently, in nineteen, uh, two thousand and nineteen, one in nine people struggled with hunger. The amount today with COVID is beyond what anyone has seen since the Great Depression. All those who've been involved have seen with their own eyes the need for so many that have never been in this position before COVID-nineteen. Our volunteers are amazing and are committed, like Abbey Salute Fitness, Crazy Dozen, First Tea, Gentlemen's Make Change, Hackensack, Meridian Health, Jokels Wild, New Jersey Kings of Grand Lodge, Ladies of Ghost, Omega Phi, uh, Psi Fraternity, Pembroke Area Block Association, the Plainfield Country Club, Nine West Golf Course, Plainfield Public Library, Plainfield Public School, Board of Education, Plainfield Senior Citizens, Queen of Queens Grand Lodge, the Rotary Club of Fanwood Scotch Plains, Second Impression of Piscataway, Sleepy Hollow Neighbors, The Coffee Box, The Salvation Army, Tri Phi Omega Chapter, AKA Sorority, U-Haul of Plainfield, United Way of Union County. The Rotary Club of Plainfield Starfish Food Pantry in the Plainfield YMCA with the Greater Somerset Y started this as an eight-week giving, which has turned into a wonderful partnership at fifteen weeks. Kejuk Chubb, Michael Townley, Sean McKenna, and myself are asking us to find a suitable place to store the self-shable, stable food and fresh fruits and vegetables weekly for Saturday distribution for those in need. We are asking the mayor, the council, administration, shareholders, please look at ways that this program can continue to help the people of Plainfield. We have a large undocumented population, and many that do not want to be involved with paperwork to feed their family. For the last fourteen weeks, we have given out ten thousand five hundred and fifty-one boxes, equalling seven thousand nine hundred and thirty-eight households, which then equals three, thirty-one thousand five hundred and twenty-eight people that have been able to eat, and we cannot forget our seniors that we've delivered to their homes, ten, uh, one thousand forty-one. We understand that everyone has a million things going on, and we're all worried about the future, but we all are working hard to find a place, and we've had no luck re- relocating for the food bank to be held here in Plainfield. And I know Union County has a food bank that they're giving away this week, on Thursday, and another Thursday in this month, but it's at Kane University, and for the majority of the people that go to Salvation Army are walk-ups. Um, Ducrey, we've been doing drive-through, but we're just pleading that somebody in the community somewhere will be able to help us find a building that we can store fifteen to twenty pallets a week, so we can distribute to people throughout our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Priano. Our next member of the public is now unmuted. Talk here is permitted. Please unmute yourself. Ms. Cooper?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Sam Sekita Cooper here, ninety Brokaw Boulevard in Plainfield. Uh, want to say kudos to the creation of an app. I think that's an awesome idea. I am hoping that it's going to be meaningful to the community, um, much better than our current website is. I can tell you that tonight I knew the meeting was scheduled, and I went to look on the, the website, I went to look on the Facebook page, and there is nothing. There are less than twenty people on this call right now. There's a reason for that. It's because, one, they either forgot about the meeting, two, they didn't see a reminder on any of the pages, they didn't see anything in the weekly newsletter. I've looked, and I looked again, and I had to reach out to someone to ask for the link for this meeting tonight. I don't care that it may have been the same link that we've been using. What I care about is constant and consistent effective communication to our community so that we can have a chance to be heard and prepared on what's going on within our city. Um, I'm disturbed to hear that we are building yet another apartment complex. As a business owner myself, I do realize that we need revenue, however, thinking about the fact that we are now creating another residential dwelling that is a hundred and four units. All I can think about is the burden that this will cause on the school system that is already underfunded and stressed out with its current financial issues. You cannot tell me that there is data that supports that these one-to-two units won't produce any detriment to the school system. There are families who live two and three and four in these small two and three, um, you know, bedroom apartments because they have no other choice, because they've been displaced, whatever the, you know, their means may be, and those children have a right to our school district. And you can't say to me that they're not going to use our school system, which is already, um, having twenty-five million dollars of its funds that come from the state, sent over to the charter schools. So, we really need to think about allowing, or shall I say disallowing, any more residential dwellings that are brand new. I, I, I just can't even, I couldn't believe that I heard that just now. So if we could look at that, um, that would be great. There's no policing going on, on how many people are in these buildings or how many people are residing. So you can't tell me that those occupants, at least half of them, are going to have a child or two that's going to be into the district. Secondly, uh, PMUA is backed up. There are residents who are attempting to have bulk pickups, and they're being told December and January of next year. And I do understand that some of the employees have been furloughed. I do understand that, um, some employees have been, you know, terminated altogether. However, that is a huge undertaking for the resident to have to take those bulk items to the yard, which is the only other alternative that PMUA is offering. When you think about people that When you think about people that are selling their homes and they're attempting to empty out the contents so that they can prepare for that sale, what are they supposed to do if they can't get their items picked up for a service that is a part of what they pay quarterly? So I'm hoping that, you know, people that are on this call, they can look into that as well to see if there's some other option that we can do. I would also ask that you please consider 30 second PSA regarding the census. The people are coming out, and I know that because in other towns, they stuck that little notice that they've been out and, you know, you need to be counted. We need to make sure that people know that the census is coming door to door for those who did not complete their census timely. I can't say enough that our public website, meaning the city hall website, does not do enough in giving information to the community. If you look at your city's Facebook page, I believe I just looked at it. There was approximately 4,000 people. We have over 50,000 people in the city. So how are you communicating with them? Robo calls are not going to get it. That weekly newsletter is not going to get it. We need to come out with something publicly on television. We we had some ads last year in reference to the restaurants. Why can't we have something this year? Again, 30 seconds, something that says, hey, we are Plainfield. We are here for you. Please get counted, call this number if you need assistance, whatever it may be. But we need to do something so that we can be counted, so that we can get that necessary money to continue to fund us.
Council President, five minutes has expired.
You, that was right in the nick of time. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Okay, the next caller, talking is permitted. Go right ahead and unmute yourself, Mrs. Burwinkle. Mrs. Burwinkle, did you intend to raise your hand? Talking is now permitted.
At this point, I do not.
There we go. Oh, you did not?
I do not.
Okay, thank you. Sorry. Okay, so seeing no more for public comment, I'd like to make a motion to close public comment. Motion.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Any opposition? Abstentions? Public comment is now closed. I will now ask for a motion to adjourn the meeting.
So moved.
So moved.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Any opposition? Abstentions? This meeting is adjourned. Thank you all.